Bienvenidos y gracias a todos ustedes por tomarse el tiempo de sus horarios para estar aquí esta noche. Esta noche el Consejo tiene el privilegio de emitir una proclamación reconociendo que el 20 de abril de 2013 hasta el 24 de abril de 2014, que es un año, es el año del Ludlow Centenario. Y veo que tenemos un representante de la Unidad de Trabajadores de Minas presentes hoy, el Sr. Bob Betero. Quiero en particular agradecerles por estar aquí esta noche. Y si hay individuos aquí que son retirados mineros de carbón, pediría que levanten las manos para que podamos reconocer su presencia, ya que la minería de carbón y las actividades de carbón han jugado un papel importante en la historia de Trinidad. Y esto será parte del proceso para honrar esa tradición y esa historia. Y gracias por su trabajo en traer este evento importante a la atención estatal y nacional. Rítmicamente merece esa atención, viendo que esto va a ser el 100º aniversario del movimiento de trabajo organizado que resultó en la tragedia conocida como la masacre de Ludlow. Y con eso me gustaría leer la proclamación a esta hora. "Año del Ludlow Centenario, de abril de 2013 a abril de 2014. Mientras que el sur de Colorado es rico con muchos recursos naturales, carbón siendo uno de esos recursos, ha creado una historia muy rica y trágica para esta área. Y mientras que la minería era peligrosa y difícil en los inicios de los años 1900, con la tasa de muerte en las minas de Colorado más de doble de la tasa nacional. Y mientras que uno de los muchos sitios de minería antiguos dentro de la ciudad de Los Anamos fue el campamento de carbón Ludlow ubicado 12 millas norte oeste de Trinidad. Y mientras que en septiembre de 1913, la Unidad de Trabajadores de Minas de América organizó una lucha contra las condiciones inseguras y injustas de trabajo y de vida en Ludlow. Y mientras que el 20 de abril de 1914, la Guardia Nacional de Colorado y la compañía de combustible y hierro Colorado Camp Guards retaliaron con un ataque contra la tentación de 1200 mineros de carbón y sus familias en Ludlow, Colorado. La masacre resultó en las muertes violentas de entre 19 y 25 individuos, incluyendo dos mujeres y 11 niños que fueron asfixiados y quemados a muerte bajo una sola tentación. Y mientras que la Unidad de Trabajadores de Minas de América se reúne anualmente en el sitio de la memoria histórica de la masacre de Ludlow, que es un lugar histórico nacional, para recordar lo que fue el incidente más letal en los campos de minería de carbón en el sur de Colorado. Y mientras que, muy obviamente, gran parte de la historia de esta región está vinculada a la industria de la minería de carbón, y muchos residentes locales tienen ancestros inmigrantes que vinieron aquí para trabajar en las minas de carbón y murieron en esas minas o en la masacre de Ludlow. Ahora, por lo tanto, yo, Bernadette Baca González, alcalde de la ciudad de Trinidad, Colorado, debo proclamar que el 20 de abril de 2013 hasta el 24 de abril de 2014 es el año del Ludlow Centenario en la ciudad de Trinidad, y exhorto a todos los ciudadanos a recordar a aquellos mineros de carbón que murieron y a sus familias de la masacre de Ludlow hace 100 años, y la importancia de este evento pivotal en la historia estadounidense. Sr. Betero, es mi honor presentarle esta proclamación. Y creo que la señora Marshall va a compartir con el público lo que sucederá con las proclamaciones.
Gracias, Madam Alcalde, y miembros del Consejo. Han sido emitidas proclamaciones separadas pero similares esta semana. La ciudad de Walsenberg emitió su proclamación anoche. Los comisioneros de la ciudad de Los Anamos emitieron su proclamación esta mañana. La ciudad de Trinidad y nuestro alcalde emitieron nuestra proclamación esta noche. Y los comisioneros de la ciudad de Huelfino emitieron su proclamación esta mañana. Cada proclamación tendrá tres copias originales. Una copia, una serie, irá al oficio de la Unidad de Trabajadores de Minas de América en Washington DC para residir allí. Una serie irá al oficio de la Unidad de Trabajadores de Minas de América en Denver, donde el Sr. Betero tendrá una serie allí. Y la tercera será presentada al gobernador Hickinluber on Friday a 2:30 a la Casa. Él firmará una orden ejecutiva para establecer la Comisión de Ludlow. Y esas proclamaciones junto con la orden ejecutiva se convertirán en parte del registro histórico de Colorado. Y en particular, gracias al Sr. Betero, quien nos trajo esta oportunidad. Cuando se anunció la comisión, le preguntó si el sur de Colorado iba a llevar el paso. Y sin duda lo hacemos, así que gracias por hacer esto. Y invitar al Sr. Betero a que venga.
Sí, muy bien. Que venga aquí. Será nuestro placer el Consejo presentarle la proclamación.
Probablemente nunca haya visto un micrófono que no me guste. Quiero agradecer al alcalde y al consejo de Trinidad. Sabes, la Unidad de Trabajadores de Minas, por supuesto, como dijo el alcalde, la masacre de Ludlow ocurrió el 20 de abril de 1914. Y la Unidad de Trabajadores de Minas erectó un monumento allí el 18 de mayo de 1918. Y cada año desde entonces han tenido un servicio anual para commemorar a estas personas que murieron, porque sentimos que estamos sobre sus hombros. Y todo lo que hemos podido hacer en cuanto a la seguridad de las minas, la salud de los mineros, los beneficios y los salarios que esos personas establecieron para que nosotros ganemos. La lucha comenzó el 23 de septiembre de 1913 y continuó hasta diciembre de 1914 cuando comenzó la lucha. La lucha en realidad no fue exitosa. No llevó a una unión allí o no llevó a un acuerdo de negociación colectivo. Pero lo que hizo en todo este país fue establecer lo que fue posteriormente durante la administración de Franklin Delano Roosevelt, la Ley Leidner. Y permitió a los trabajadores de este país el derecho a organizar. Y muchas personas aprovecharon eso y mejoraron ellos mismos a través de eso. Generalmente, llevamos un servicio a cada junio. Este año no vamos a llevar el servicio en junio. Lo hemos mudado al 22 de septiembre. Es domingo el 22 de septiembre. Por supuesto, en 2013 vamos a commemorar el inicio de la lucha. Y luego el año siguiente vamos a llevar el servicio el 20 de abril de 2014, pero eso también ocurre el domingo de Ester. Así que no queremos competir con el domingo de Ester allí, así que hemos decidido llevar nuestro evento el 18 de mayo de 2014. Y eso commemora la dirección de la estatua y cosas. Como sabéis, aquí, el tiempo se me aleja, pero creo que fue hace tres años, el Servicio Nacional de Parques dedicó ese como un lugar histórico nacional. Es el único lugar histórico dedicado al trabajo en Estados Unidos. Así que creo que deberíamos ser orgullosos de ello. Como usted dijo, han habido muchas personas dentro de esta comunidad que either tuvieron familia o amigos que eran mineros de carbón. Mucha de la arquitectura en nuestra área de la ciudad de Nueva York fue hecha a partir de muchos inmigrantes que venían de diferentes países. Y había maestros que enseñaban a los niños de los mineros de carbón. Había prejeros dentro de la comunidad. Había otras personas que ayudaron a esas personas a seguir con sus vidas y hacer Trinidad. En una época, Trinidad era, creo que durante un corto periodo de tiempo, era la segunda mayor ciudad en el estado de Colorado. Y así que... Pero quiero agradeceros por hacer esto. Y esperamos que todos salgan y commemoren este evento. Esperamos tener una serie de eventos. Hay muchos eventos que están sucediendo en todo el sur de Colorado y Colorado como un todo. Esto también atrae no solo la atención nacional, sino también la atención internacional. Y solo quiero agradecer a los ciudadanos de Trinidad y al alcalde y al consejo de la ciudad por hacer esto por nosotros. Gracias mucho.
Estás bien, alcalde. Y no sé, ¿querías...? No sé, ¿tenemos una oportunidad de fotografía mientras presentas la proclamación?
Vamos.
Estoy aquí.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Very good, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Aker?
Any other questions? The energy workshop, does that deal specifically with commercial or does it also include residential?
You know, my understanding is right now they're targeting the commercial because I think that's an opportunity where they think it's been, has not been well served in the past because there's been some residential type things done. I don't think they'd turn anyone away that wants to register and come. But the residential's been done, I mean, in many areas. I think they've got some good models for that. This is a new model for commercial.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Aker?
Mr. Aker.
I'm ready, Ms. Dens.
Madam Mayor, I gave each of you, as I was kind of coming into council chambers this evening, a packet marked confidential. It's not confidential at all, just so you know, I was recycling. So, it contained in that, one of the things that's in there is a duplication of something that Ms. Garrett gave you earlier, and I apologize for that. I wanted to make sure you had that. That is a stipulation from the Department of Revenue with respect to a liquor license violation that one of your liquor license holders has this evening. We can talk about that when that's on the agenda later if you would like. We wanted to simply make you aware of that. I don't mean to say "we," I did, but Ms. Garrett submitted it also, just so you knew. And that came into City Hall yesterday, I believe, so we just got that, and that's why you weren't giving a copy before. So, the Department of Revenue never lets us know would they have something going on in terms of like an undercover alcohol, you know, kind of violation sting operation, for lack of a better term. So, I did call the Department of Revenue and ask them if they had any other pending matters, any other like punitive matters for any other liquor license holders in Trade Act, and they said the only other one they had was for the Penny Saver, which is not in Trade Act, it's in Los Angeles County. And so, my point is, we don't get made aware of these things until they basically have served essentially as judge, jury, and executioner. We get, you know, the aftermath and what they have done with the violation, and that is the stipulation. The only other thing I have in that packet is an update on marijuana, and I just wanted you guys to be able to read that. I'm sorry I didn't get it to you when your packets went out on Friday, but I was, you know, the fault is mine, nothing came in this week. With respect to that, the last thing I have to tell you, and that is, on the news the other day, they had a story about how there is legislation, legislation has been introduced in the U.S. House of Representatives to get the feds to recognize state action on the legalization of marijuana. And I think also the medicinal marijuana thing, I don't think that's a good thing that's going on by the feds. So, there is legislation pending, has a long way to go, but I just thought you would all like to know that. So, that is all I have.
I found that particular article to be interesting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Does it need like bipartisan support too?
Yes.
It does, it does. I think there were at least like half a dozen sponsors of the legislation, the proposed legislation, and it was bipartisan, so that's a good sign.
Anybody else have questions for Mr. Downs? Mr. Downs, I'd just encourage us to, and I know you're doing this, closely monitor what the State of Colorado is doing, because if I read that legislation correctly, it specifies that January 1, 2014, licenses shall begin being issued. And one of the fears I have is that the State of Colorado isn't going to step up and provide the direction guidance, et cetera. And as happened at one occasion in my career in Texas, everybody was waiting for the State of Texas to do something, and they didn't. And then what they did do is say, "Oh, we're going to leave you out as a matter of local concern." And so, it was like, at the 11th hour, everybody was working to try and figure out how to deal with a very serious issue. That one, of course, had to do with something totally unrelated to the complexities of this type issue.
Absolutely. Well, and one of the, one of the problems that may occur, and that is, the recommendation from the Amendment 64 Committee, and I don't know if this has gone through the Legislative Ad-Hoc Committee or the Legislature's Ad-Hoc Committee, but that is allowing, for the first year, beginning January 1 of 2014, allowing the only medicinal marijuana dispensaries to serve as a recreational marijuana sale, you know, point of sale. That's over the first year or two on only those. So, if a municipality didn't act in getting a dispensary, and I don't know, I guess, one could then say, "Okay, we're going to allow a dispensary and allow the sale of recreational marijuana." But one of the articles I gave you is on Puebla, the sales tax that they made for, for last year, and it's $58,000 for, I believe, it's eight dispensaries. But that's not bad, of course, a much larger, you know, area, but it's not bad, especially for a business that has no obligation to account for their real revenue. Not saying that anybody would under-report their revenue, but, you know, God forbid. But anyways, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Downs? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is Item 6, and that's committee reports. And we were contemplating a report from the Tree Board, and they came and talked to us during the communications section, so unless there's another individual connected with the Tree Board that has additional remarks, or Mr. Aker, if you have something to share with us, we'll move on.
I don't have anything further to share.
Okay. The next agenda item is Item 7, and that is unfinished business, and we've been diligent. We don't have any unfinished business, so moving right along, we will move to Agenda Item 8A, and this involves the appointment of the mayor pro temp. And Mr. Aker, I believe you're going to introduce this item.
Yes. As we've, we had a discussion at a work session several weeks ago, we've discovered as we were going through appointments that we needed to correct something that's been done kind of against charter for many years, or for a few years at least, and with Mr. Schu, Councilmember Schu being up, his term being up, from being mayor pro temp, we needed to reappoint another, a new mayor pro temp. However, by reviewing the charter, we discovered that we needed to really do that appointment following a regular election in January, from the election being in November. So, to kind of set us back on course, our discussion was to appoint Ms. Councilmember Velazquez as mayor pro temp for the remainder portion of her term. That would kind of set the stage so that we could reappoint a new mayor pro temp in January after the election. She was, agreed to take on that task as she ends her term, and I think that is a good way to put us back where we need to be following the charter. So, with that, if there's any other questions or discussion, but I think from reviewing the charter and talking with Mr. Downs and Ms. Garrett, I think that's probably the best way to move forward, so.
And procedurally, should we open the floor for nominations and deal with that and then move on toward the actual vote?
From my thought is you could do it that way, someone could move to vote by acclamation. I think it just takes a motion.
Very good. Okay, this time I will entertain a motion.
I move that Councilwoman Velazquez appointed mayor pro temp by acclamation.
Second? We have a motion. And a second. And, Audrey, do you have to do the roll call anyhow? Because we just say "yea."
You can say "yea" anyway.
Okay. We, I, I say "yes."
Yes.
She's drafted.
Yes. It appears to be you, Ms. Velazquez.
Thank you, Ms. Velazquez.
As Sir Montez said, I was the chosen.
That's why I praise the council.
Thank you so much for your willingness to serve and help us get back on track. Do you have anything you wish to share with us before we move on to?
I really don't. I really don't. My time is coming.
We'll then move on to Agenda Item 8B, and this is to consider a special events permit, Mal, Vinus, and Spiritus requested by Southern Colorado Repertory Theater located at 131 West Main Street for the dates of May 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 10th of 2013. And I, Ms. Marshall, are you the representative for SCRT?
I am, Madam Mayor, members of council. Everyone else on the board is rehearsing for Peter Pan now, so here I stand as the lone board member, along with Councilmember Miles.
Very good. Can you tell us a little bit about this upcoming event?
Sure, absolutely. We hope that you all come out on May 3rd, 4th, and 5th to attend Peter Pan, which is in rehearsal right now as we speak. It involves about 30 different children from the community, and Janet Trancher's playing Captain Hook, and that in and of itself sounds like a fantastic opportunity, and she's such a great actress. This is, every year the youth theater company does an event, and that's what this is for. May 10th is actually a traveling act that comes in to do, it's a musical that was written about the Love Boat massacre years ago, and so they'll be coming in to perform that in our theater on May 10th.
Very good.
So, yes, so that's what, I believe everything should be in order.
I just have a question for you. This is a special events permit, is this in lieu of a regular liquor license? Because I seem to have some recollection that there was discussion about a...
Absolutely, right. This is an absolute separate application. The tavern license, which Southern Colorado Repertory Theater has applied for, is in process. This is prior to that, and we have, I think, up to 15 different times that we can pull a special event permit. So, since the premise is not yet permitted with a tavern license, we're able to use the special event, as we've used for 10 years now, I think, whenever we've had a license. So, this is not about the tavern license, that is in process, and you'll sure see Mr. Jim Davis, who's our representative on that issue.
Madam Mayor, I don't have any problems issuing a special liquor license to the SCRT, but I must say this, and I wrote this down, so I, it's very important to me, so I'm reading this, so I wouldn't forget.
Okay.
I believe the SCRT is a great asset to our city, but I do have a lot of concerns about issuing a regular liquor license. I don't expect answers tonight on these issues, but when this comes back to council, I would like to have some answers. I believe the SCRT is a family-oriented business with children participating in place and some college students. If I may continue now, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Some of my concerns are, and I list them one by one here, and like I say, I don't need no answers tonight to them, maybe.
Sure.
Because these are real liable concerns that I have going on. Number one, we have four liquor licenses within 100 feet of each other.
Okay.
We have Matt Kelly's Bar, we have Ballaluna's, we have Mission of the Ball, and we have the Tap House.
Okay.
So, that's kind of a little bit of concern for me that, where I'm seeing, you know, so many liquor licenses, regular liquor licenses issued, okay? Another, another concern of mine is, what is the total capacity of that building? The total capacity, does that include bartenders, actors, waiters? What's going on on that?
We can, I can answer that, it doesn't, the total capacity does include, but we'll get back with you with a comprehensive answer for everything.
I like, and there's also a question that I have about fire escape. According to the detailed map here, this is only the bottom floor of the SCRT. Is there any fire escapes or any doors to the top, is it there?
We'll, we'll bring you some floor plans, Mr. Bonato, for that, absolutely, when we come back. I believe all you're looking at, because the special event permit tonight, sir, was just for just the downstairs area and the stage area, that's all we have a diagram for.
Well, this, like I said, the next, when this comes back to council, I'd like to get some answers, and we'll be to the council also. Let's see where I'm at here, Tara. And then we're, then we're looking at, how do you control loitering and people want to smoke? We dealt with this with Matt Kelly's, and I think we have, you know, it's like me, I like to have a good dinner and go out and smoke my little Italian cigar. Where do I have to go in the alleyway of Ballaluna's, or where do I go? So, how do you control that? Okay? Hope this council is listening.
It seems to be, sir.
And then also, have you ever thought if the SCRT moves, they would have to apply for another liquor license?
Yes, sure, and I think these are all good questions. Perhaps we could package the answers for you, and that way we could get more board input on that, especially with our executive director, Harriet Vujua, in rehearsal, she's directing the play tonight. So, as a board member, I kind of feel like maybe Harriet, we need to get Harriet involved in answering some of these questions as the executive director, to put that on, on her to answer some of those.
I just have a few more, Madam Mayor. How does council know if volunteers are properly trained to serve alcohol? I mean, it was listed in here that are, that you have training, but how does council actually know that those servers have the proper training?
You know, I can speak to the special event permit, and I think, you know, anytime the Mitchell or the chamber comes in front of you, we always, I've heard them always say that they're TIPS certified, and the ones that, for these particular events at SCRT are TIPS certified, which is the alcohol beverage training certification. Perhaps part of the packet is, we could provide that, that, those certifications.
I just have one more, Madam Mayor. Right now the city has about 36 or 37 liquor licenses on the books, you know? When I was in life business at first, back in 2000 or whatever, when tourists would come in my station, they'd say, "You know, there's a lot of bars and there's a lot of restaurants in this town." And now, it seems like we got more bars than we do restaurants. So, that's another concern of mine, where do we draw the line? Or how does this council draw the line where we stop? So, I hope that these questions can be answered in a timely manner, and that, you know, it's a concern that I have, and I think maybe the council would like, like to find out these answers also, and maybe with the fire chief, you know, inspecting that fire escape on the second floor and the, and the base down floor. If you could do that, I'd like to hear.
Sure, and of course, all of those questions, if I understand you, Councilmember Bonato, are related to the tavern license, is that correct?
Right, yes.
Okay, which we're not actually hearing before you, before tonight.
Well, that's going to come out to us.
Okay, it will, definitely, and I can, I would be glad to take those questions back to the board and to our executive director.
Ms. Marshall, so, I clear that the special permit, that's only the first floor of the facility, there's not going to be any event on the second floor, so we don't have to worry about exits or whatever up there at this point.
Exactly, and I believe if you'll look at your packets, there's a flyer plan that's been filed, and chief has signed off on that. So, were there any questions particular to these four special event permits that I might answer for you? Okay.
Any questions from members of council?
There is a notation from the building inspector that holes need to be repaired in the ceilings.
Okay.
I'm hard pressed to see the connection there.
Something that's been rectified.
I don't think we're suspending any children from those, from the, but I can follow up on that in relation to the holes in the suspension.
It's either champagne court or gunfire, you know.
I mean, it's not, it's a strange one to see on one of these.
I don't understand, I think it's a hybrid. Right. Obviously, as you can tell, I'm pinch hitting tonight, but all of your concerns will be taken back. Thank you, thank you.
And I think everything appears in order.
I do want to say, thank you for, if you so choose, granting these. One of the things I would love to report is, since SCRT located on Main Street in this theater, 50% of the crowds that we've drawn for our performances are new audience. So, that is really... So that is really exciting to report. And as you know, with a lot of the other synergies we're trying to do in the downtown area, the fact that a performing arts venue that's been around for a decade is drawing new audience is just something I think we can celebrate as a district and as a city. So, thank you.
Good.
A full edition, please.
Thank you, Mr. Bonato.
I believe if everything is in order in connection with the special event permit, we're ready to entertain a motion.
So I move that we accept and approve the application for the special permit by SCRT.
And for this date specified, the third, fourth-
May three, four, five, and 10.
Okay, there it is. And may I have a second? Mr. Shu, second, and any further discussion from council? And seeing none, we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Maité?
Yes.
Miles?
Is the board member abstaining?
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes. Thank you. Yes, thank you. The next agenda item is eight C, and it is to consider a special events permit, malt, vinous, and spiritus requested by Mount Carmel Health Wellness and Community Center at 911 Robinson Avenue, excuse me, for the date of April 27, 2013.
Is there a representative from the Mount Carmel present this evening?
I'm not on that board.
I was looking at Ms. Marshall.
Scott Hamlin indicated that he intends to withdraw this application, and he's to get me something in writing, so it's not, it doesn't need to be considered this evening.
Should we, until we get it officially pulled, just table it? May I have a motion to table?
I move to table this issue to our next regular meeting.
Motion by Ms. Bolton?
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Velazquez. Any discussion? And we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Maité?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you. The next agenda item is eight D, and that's to consider approval of a permit application to modify the premises of Image Hospitality LLC, which is Doing Business as Quality Inn located at 3125 Total Drive. And sir, are you here representing that entity?
Yep.
Could I have you come forward and identify yourself, sir? Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Good evening. My name is Harry Patel.
Mr. Patel?
Yeah.
Welcome. I understand this application is to add a new deck in the rear of your establishment, and I think there's going to be an access way from the bar out to the patio?
Yes.
Are there any questions from members of council?
No, I think it appears to be a very nice addition to your establishment.
Thank you very much.
Yes. If everything is in order, I believe we're ready to entertain a motion to approve the modification of premises application filed by Image Hospitality LLC, Doing Business as Quality Inn at 3125 Total Drive. I move for approval. Motion by Ms. Bolton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bonato. Any discussion or questions? And we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Maité?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. The next agenda item is eight E, and that is to consider a special events permit, malt, vinous, and spiritus requested by the Arthur Roy Mitchell Memorial Incorporated at 150 East Main Street, and that event will be for May 5, 2013. And is there a representative from the Mitchell Museum present?
He was here, Steve, but he left. Do these people actually know that they have to be present to the meeting?
Yeah, I believe-
And I did emphasize, I think, every single one, that they need to be here.
It's the simple, it's not like other lives, your application, who table it? She will be out of time.
She'll be out of time, I think. Probably my biggest problem would be, I would need repost the date that council considering, so yeah, she would definitely be out of time.
Do you want to have Paula's phone number?
I do. I'll go call her.
Thank you, Tara.
Excuse me.
Can we pass on this item and then move to item eight F?
Berna, I am on that board, if you would like me to sub-board it.
Oh, I forgot, yes.
Not here on the bill, sir.
Excuse me. Let me go get Tara.
I think technically, so long as there's a representative, we can proceed. Yeah. Do you mind, Ms. Michaels?
Thank you, Sarah. She didn't answer. Mayor, maybe I'm embarrassed that there's no one here, but I know that the board has been working incredibly hard on making sure that the Mitchell stays on the forefront on a continuous basis all year long now versus in years past when they were just really out in the spotlight during the tourism season. So I would hate to see Paula not do this. She works very hard. I'm not quite sure what the problem was.
Okay. Do you know a little bit about the event that you can share with us?
Well, I know that she's doing a lot of events. I'm aware of the Garage Hill event and the art event that's happening in the next couple weeks, and the Cinco de Mayo. She's gotten a whole group of women together that are doing, opening the museum up that night when they have other things going on in the downtown area to welcome people in and give tours about the artwork and celebration of Cinco de Mayo.
Isn't that the evening of the heritage potluck?
It is, it is, which I think is so cool, because the heritage potluck is to bring something from your heritage. So, you know, Spanish, Polish, German, whatever it is, to bring it. So I think that'll be very cool. Those dishes will be depicted next to the dish where it comes from the nationality. So I think that's very cool.
Well, if everything is in order, I will entertain a motion to approve the special events permit for the date requested. Motion by Ms. Miles?
Second.
Second by Ms. Velazquez. Discussion or questions? And seeing none, I think we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Maité?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
I'm going to abstain, and I just recently joined that board.
Thank you very much, Chris.
And thank you, Ms. Michaels, and I'm glad we were able to get over that little hump in the road. The next agenda item is eight F, which is a hotel and restaurant liquor license renewal requested by Fishers Peak Lodging LLC, Doing Business as Trinidad Holiday Inn, Peaks Restaurant and Lounge at 3130 Santa Fe Trail Drive. Is there a representative here tonight from the Holiday Inn? Seeing no one, I do not believe we can proceed.
I move to table.
Motion by, I'm sorry.
Ask a question?
Yes.
Is this the same thing that we got the?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Motion to table by Ms. Bolton? Second by Mr. Shu. Any discussion or questions? Mr. Downs, when this comes back to us, could you be sure to provide us your input regarding whether this situation is having any kind of adverse impact on their eligibility for a renewal? I don't think so, but I'd rather you take a look at it and give us your advice.
I'd be happy to.
Very good.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we're ready for a roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Maité?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes.
So that matter has been tabled. The next agenda item is eight G, and this involves two appointments to the Tourism Board. First up for consideration is the recommended appointment of Ms. Si Michaels, who operates La Quinta Inn and Suites for the vacant lodging seat on the board. And Ms. Michaels, thank you so much for being here. We know you had a conflict and weren't able to attend a work session. I will now entertain a motion to appoint Si Michaels to the Tourism Board.
So the move?
Okay. Motion by Mr. Maité, second by Mr. Shu. Are there any questions or discussion from council? And we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Maité?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes.
The second vacancy on the board has two individuals vying for the same seat. The two applicants for the vacant position are Mr. John Parenti and Ms. Liz Torres, and council must act to elect one of those individuals for the existing vacancy. And I refer council to your packet. You will note that Ms. Liz Torres, who's present in the audience this evening, is the owner and operator of two businesses or activities which serve tourists. And Mr. John Parenti, who is also in the audience, is a volunteer at the AR Mitchell Museum, which is a business or activity which serves tourists. I will now entertain a motion.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Torres.
Motion to nominate Ms. Torres by Ms. Velazquez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bonato. Any questions or discussion? And I believe we're ready for a vote.
Bolton?
No. And I would like to clarify that, with all due respect to Ms. Torres, that I feel Mr. Parenti's education, past marketing education, make him a better qualified candidate.
Bonato?
Yes.
Maité?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ms. Torres, congratulations. Thank you. I think you're going to be a wonderful addition to the Tourism Board. I'm pleased to see that we now have two women on that board, and I'm pleased to see that we have a downtown business owner on that board. I think there are many people who are going to be encouraged that we have a businessperson who has, as they say in the South, a dog in the hunt, that you'll participate in, just like Ms. Michaels also. You, my dear, also have a dog in the hunt. So thank you so much. Mr. Parenti, thank you so much for expressing interest. We appreciate your interest in serving. I think presently on the Tourism Board, we already have one individual who volunteers at the Welcome Center.
And Ms.? And I just want to make one other comment. I believe there's capacity for an ex-officio member on that board, and I would encourage you to explore that, because your advice certainly would be very, very welcome and agree with some Councilwoman Bolton's comments about how your background and education can contribute.
Any additional comments or observations? Thank you very much. Now, the next agenda item is number nine, which is payment of bills. Are there any questions regarding the bills?
I'd make a motion for approval to pay the bills.
All right. Motion by Ms. Bolton?
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Velazquez. Any discussion or questions? And we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Maité?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes.
The next agenda item is number 10, that's approval of payroll. We've got to pay our employees. May I have a motion to approve payroll for the time period from, oh, let me look at my cheat sheet here, time period from March 16, 2013, to March 29, 2013?
I'm seeing different dates on my agenda. March 30th, 2013, 2013, maybe 2013, 2013, 2016.
Sorry. All right. So, all right, so as stated by Ms. Bolton, may I have a second?
I sustain my motion as amended.
Okay, all right. Motion by Mr. Maité, second by?
Second.
Mr. Shu? All right. Any discussion? I may have picked up the wrong payroll. Sorry about that. I think we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Maité?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes.
The next agenda item is item number 11, and that is for an executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under Colorado Revised Statute, section 24-6-4022F, and not involving any specific employee who has requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of this body or an elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body, or of an elected official or personnel policies that do not require the discussions of matters, personal to the particular employees. And specifically, this will be the quarterly informal city manager review of performance and relationship with city council. May I have a motion to go into executive session for the reasons stated? Motion by Ms. Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bolton? Any discussion or questions? And we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Bonato?
Yes.
Maité?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Velazquez?
Yes.
Becky Gonzalez?
Yes.
And for the record, I believe, since this will be a personnel matter, is there any